We have three meetings of minutes to approve, not the last meeting. I've seen them, I'm okay with them, we approve all of them.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor is not here. We have members of the library who speak.
Oh, now's the time.
Yes.
It's the speaker.
Names for the record.
Right, oh, I'm Nora Blake, I'm the director of the Emily Wilson Library.
Marge Prendergast, president of the board.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks for letting us have a little bit of time.
This lovely lady's gonna cover it all.
I'm sorry to tell you this, but the mayor's out of town.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
We wanted you guys to give.
We've had our meeting with the mayor and she suggested that maybe we just come and talk to you guys and let you know what our budget is like and what our situation is like, so that's what I've come to do. I have more paper to add to your pile if you want it. And really, all it is is our, essentially, we're hopeful that she might give us more than she normally does, and we're hopeful that, in talking to you, that perhaps you won't want to cut it. That is essentially what my purpose here.
That won't happen on my watch.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you.
But just to give you a sense of.
Well, it might, I'm only one vote.
It's essentially the.
Screaming, jumping, make a big scene.
Yeah, so essentially, we've, in the last few years, we've been actually asking for the full amount of our operating expenses, less building maintenance costs, which, in our agreement with the city, that's essentially clearly what it says, is that city money can be used for operating expenses, library materials, staff salaries, but not for operating the building, heating, cooling, landscaping, repairs, those kinds of things. So I've been presenting a budget request for the last few years for all of that and what it puts into it, and I think it's been an education for the former mayor, as well as this mayor, they didn't realize, I think, how much it really costs to run the library. Years before that, I think they just simply said, "Give us the state mandate at one and a quarter percent," and that's all they did. And so, hopefully, I mean, I don't think she'll need us at the $367,000, because that would be a huge increase, but we're hopeful that she will give us more than the state mandate at one and a quarter percent. And this gives you a detail of what it costs us, this year's gonna be a tough one for us, and probably for you folks too, because of minimum wage. We have to pay the state minimum wage, we can't pay any of this, and eight of our staff, and our 12 staff have our at state minimum wage rates, and so they get a six, a quarter percent increase, and that's the bulk of our challenge this year. So, I'm not sure what else I can tell you, I just wanted to present you with our budget and let you see a little bit of what our purposes are, just so you have the information and know that that $210,000 that she gives us really doesn't even hit the salary.
How do you manage the rest of it? Through donations, right?
Donations, and then, what is it, the interest off the endowment, our interest off the endowment.
Where is that listed here?
Um.
These are all expenses, this isn't anything.
Exactly, no, this doesn't let you see the income piece of it. Basically, we make up, we make decisions based on what the mayor says she'll give us for the coming year, and I may have to cut some areas here, and then the private association.
Can you ballpark what that revenue is?
It's.
Total revenue.
They put in about $140,000, $150,000, I think is what they put toward the library each year.
Maybe.
The Public Library Association needs help, and out of the.
And that includes endowment and donations?
Right.
And the donations are not that large, we're working on the board itself doing a lot more fundraising.
I think last year, we brought in about $25,000 in donations, maybe $30,000.
Was that done through, like, crowdfunding or internet?
All kinds of things, yes, we did a crowdfunding thing, we did Valley Gifts Day, we've done that every year, they're not doing that again this year, done an annual ask letter, oh yeah, we did the Elf Ball, that was hugely beneficial to us.
But this year, they're not doing the Elf Ball, the Elf Committee is kind of disbanding all three gentlemen, pretty much, well, two of the three are retiring, and they are doing something with their funds.
So the city gave $210,832 last year?
That's correct. Yeah, there's an initial, a municipal appropriation.
When we get the budget, we always get nick comparisons, we know which one is last year and this year.
Good, yeah, and there's a, there's a state mandate that they have to give us the average, 2% more than the average of the last three years of what they've given us, the city, otherwise we lose state aid funding and we get decertified, so they're always short to give us that minimum.
I think she was saying would be.
About one and a quarter percent is what it works out to. Yeah, every year, it's what it works out to, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for hearing us.
No, you're welcome, there's not much, we can only say yes to what she gives us, but we could cut it, but that.
Hey, 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 not on your watch, please don't. As far as the endowment goes, we're trying really hard to take a certain percentage and not go above that, because we want the endowment to be there for you guys to get that.
Are you touching the principal, or is it all interest?
We're into the principal a little bit, not that much, but we're trying to back out of that, because we're trying to do more fundraising, but at the same time, it's, our library is up 40% usage.
Yeah.
In the past year, ever since we've done the repair and renovation, 40% increase, it's huge. People are using that library constantly, and it's not just the kids, so we have to respect that, we can't stop the growth, but we can't continue to pull from the endowment and possibly cut into the principal to the point where it hurts us. So I just want you to know, we are trying our best to keep the endowment running and work with the city and fundraise.
Okay.
We know that. You made the building look lovely, it's a wonderful Mormon inviting place to.
CPA, baby.
Yeah. The question I have is, what percentage of your customer base is Williston associate?
As in the, as in the Williston school? I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Well, they have a.
But you say there's any, there's any.
My daughter. I mean, I think some of the staff members that work there come here, you know, we see people with Williston jackets on, and they come and pick up some books and things, so I'm gonna guess that there's some staff come over here.
You know Maddie.
And Bob Hill is on our board as an ex-executive member, so he's aware of what the library's doing, and I'm not sure there's a high use, not from the students, for sure.
Chuck McCullough volunteers on our investment committee to help make sure that we keep the investment rolling.
So there is. What are we gonna have on the.
Right, so there's a nice representation from Williston trying their best to help us, but we have to remember that they also, their fundraising, and although it looks like they have a lot of money, and they probably do, they still have a lot of students they're servicing, and so we're trying to work with them, and the fact that Chuck and Bob help us is a really nice gift.
You know Maddie very?
I know.
Director of the library at Williston.
Oh, I've met her a couple times, but it's been a while.
She's my daughter.
Oh, really?
So libraries are my thing.
Hey, very nice, very nice.
Well, we just wanted you to understand, if she happens to give us an increase, you guys, yes, you're gonna be supportive, and we appreciate that, but you're gonna understand that we are spending the money wisely.
Okay.
This woman is good with the budget.
We like that. We need to move on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope your meeting is efficient and quick.
Jane, do you know if Melissa's coming?
Yes.
Really?
Thanks, good to see you again, Jane. Gentlemen, take the best.
Thank you very much.
Do you know what band interest is?
She said that there was an interest payment that came in higher than we scheduled, so that is just a bonus, not an interest payment.
Bond anticipation note?
There you go.
You find that mistake.
Yes, so the bond anticipation note is probably for a bond, and how do you know what that's gonna be in, you know, last June? Because you don't know where the bond ratings are gonna be and everything, I would imagine, but, okay. I think she indicated she needed this, and we do have a public hearing, I don't have a problem moving this forward, it's up to you guys. I mean, there's nothing, to me, that looks, that's interest.
It's a little unfortunate she's not here to explain it or to have written us something.
Well, I would, I would say this, we will, we will.
I would appreciate that.
We will, we can approve it pending Melissa's attendance at the public hearing to explain it further.
I'll, I'll abstain. I, I, we can move forward, I have no objection to moving forward, except I just hope that it comes to a conclusion, affirmative or negative, without a somewhat.
Well, my recommendation is pending, if she's not there, then we continue the public hearing.
Right.
And we can make a decision at that time, or we can bring it forward without recommendation, awaiting, we can do that. Awaiting Melissa's recommendation at the.
Yeah, because I got some questions I wrote down here, you know, I mean, we budgeted $25,000 for interest on bands, and in the actuals of 16 was $7,000, the actual for 17 was $4,000, so $25,000, I understand that we have different bonds and we have some added things, and there was complete streets and the trucks loans that were taken out on, so I can understand that there'd be more, but now we're looking at $31,000. She probably thought it was straightforward.
Yeah.
So.
I would push it.
You have researched it well.
I'm just looking, I mean, I. Do we need to take a recess while we sit here?
Can't turn it off. I could try.
Well, we're waiting.
Just a couple of questions on the interest, Bill has a few.
So on that, I'm assuming I have the right lines, sometimes I'm still looking at this, but the interest of the bands are, we budgeted $25,000 this year, I understand that there's more bonds being pulled than everything else with.
So what happens is, that band rolls over after the budget's done, so I guessed interest.
Okay.
And I underestimated the amount of interest, so the transfer is to cover the difference in what I had projected it would be and what it actually is. And so that may, I've estimated high this year, or, like, these bands roll over, so we paid out part, a portion of the principal, and then we pay the interest, and it's not on a set schedule, and the interest rate gets reassessed every, every time you borrow away.
Okay.
And so, so that's why it's, that's why it's under, that's why it's underfunded.
How much did we borrow?
I believe it's 1.7 or 1.695, and so it's five different categories, part of it is the beginning design stuff for the Maple School, the fire engine that was bought a year ago, a dump truck that was bought a year ago, complete streets, so only.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and so all of that together, and I believe that the Maple Street had been brought, like, I already paid a portion of it down, but I just rolled it all out into one band to one issue.
The difference in the interest that you had projected, had estimated, and the actual interest rate is what? What are the, what are the amounts?
It was, like, I, when I had done the band before, it was under 1%, and now it's like 1.73 or something like that, but this round, and then, so what I projected for next time, I projected like 3% or 4%.
You mean for next year's budget?
Yeah, I don't, they kept me at high, but I was like, oh, well, this is what happens when I assume.
Okay.
That answers my question.
That answers my question.
Simple, thank you. So, both should approve, I don't have any questions.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, public hearing on?
On Wednesday. Wednesday, and other counselors may have very well have questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get into the pay plan with Jane. Thank you for sending the summary that you've done. I will get into that, I have questions starting, first of all, I want to make statements that you have made previously to make sure that, on the record, we're on the same page. Nobody in this new pay plan, no current employee is going to see a reduction in salary. No current employee is going to have their job significantly changed based on this pay plan. Job description changes were pretty much, what did you call them, small, just to match the job description with what they're actually doing?
Correct, that is the biggest difference, is that we found that by doing this, that a lot of our employees, their job descriptions don't match, because they do more, and some of the job descriptions, probably, she's older than two stone, they're that old, so they just need to be updated. So the changes in the pay plan are to show the changes in the jobs that are currently being done, is not to change the job description.
But that might have resulted in a step change, or, because you went from 17 to 8, it might have resulted in them being in a diff, it put them in a certain step category, which doesn't necessarily change their current pay, but gives them increased steps to go, or they might have maxed out in an earlier pay plan.
Correct.
You said that the last.
We have several employees that have been here for a long time, so they have maxed out, so all they were getting is if the pay plan employees received a hold, they would not receive the step increases each year. So by this new pay grid, the step increases, there's a few more that they will mention.
So I'm just gonna go through a couple of questions, guys, if you're up me, I'm gonna go page by page. We really, we, we. Some of the positions in the pay plan are contracted employees. Chief, deputy chief, department, department, they get contracted. They're not on the pay. Do we have any contracted employees on the pay plan? That's one big question. I noticed in here, there's quite a bit of evaluation of the DPW. What changes are instituted based on the union's, I'm sorry, based on the, sorry, I don't mean the word union, the Collins Center's review to the DPW organization, or are you, I mean, I noticed we got some charter changes we're looking at, but I'm just curious if they recommended anything that you initiated in the pay plan.
The DPW will only be the clerical and the superintendent, because all other employees are not included in the pay plan pay grid because they are unioned.
So we have two clerical, one, but the highway supervisors.
They are in the union.
They have their own union, that's right.
There's.
So there's only three people in there.
Correct, the DPW, there are three positions in the pay grid. So although recommendations were made for DPW, they are not part of what we're asking to be provided, because they are contractual, DPW employees aren't contractual.
And that's primarily because there's only three employees?
Or they're, they're a pay grid.
I mean, why, why you didn't follow through on what they asked for?
Well, we are the, there are two DPWs, there are one with supervisors who are three employees, which is currently in negotiation, so contract expires two days. So there we are, looking at some changes that potential, at the recommendation of Collins Center, but that will take place with the, that wouldn't be able to pay.
Because they have a number of titles and grade, but these are all under the union, so.
It doesn't.
It doesn't affect the pay. That's basically what I guess you were trying to say, and I. The next thing is on page nine, and we're gonna get into that, I'm sure. The salary survey, which this is a key indication of turnover in its position, if a municipality is losing people because of pay, it doesn't indicate the compensation is low, et cetera. And I'm assuming this survey, which is summary, doesn't go town by town, I mean, in the sense that we could look at what Agaron's paying. The red lines at the far side are the differences between what a person is getting, personnel director is getting versus other communities, and if it's red, it's less per hour versus the maximum versus the median. I'm reading that correctly. And in doing this, therefore, you decided to look at each pay plan, I mean, each position, and set the steps based, not solely on their recommendations, but on also your own feeling toward it, I'm just curious, how did their, their survey translate into the step of the pay grid?
Collins Center came in and they interviewed each employee, and the supervisors, and HR, and evaluated the job, that's where we found the discrepancies without descriptions. After that, they did, Collins Center did their survey, and now their survey includes more than just what you pay, you know, it was, do you supervise, do we, because what we have, you know, say an administrative assistant may supervise a clerk, in other communities, there may be, be no supervision, so there's more to the salary survey than just, that's why it's the summary you have.
In other words, if it says clerk, principal clerk, or whatever it is in one community, you don't know what the description is of that, because they might supervise some people or not, and we have a different, we have a principal clerk, but we may not have the same job.
Right.
That makes sense.
They have more responsibility, they have less responsibility, and Collins Center takes all of that into consideration, so then they came up with placement, working with myself and Monica prior to me, on really the, you know, why we do that, they should be at that level.
Based on their recommendation and your own?
In good terms, yes.
So, I didn't study this enough, I just got it this morning, versus the pay plan from before, but would you say in general that you've adopted most of these increases?
We have, and what we're looking at potentially is taking each position and putting it into the grade they have, and say they were at $20 an hour on the old pay grid, we then look at the new pay grid, the grade they're supposed to be at, and find, okay, where's the next step? Obviously, we want them to take a decrease, so we, where's the next, where do they fall on the new pay? So each person, each position will be, each person will be put where in the new pay
And none of the chosen steps have anything to do with a judgment on the performance of the individual holding that position currently? It has to do with the responsibilities of the job.
Placement in the grade?
Yes. That's important, you would think that could, could enter into it, I don't like that person, so I'm not gonna increase that step.
There is nothing on, you're looking at it as position, and where is that position right now, it's not.
JP has some interesting information, JP, the floor is yours.
Lots of questions. First of all, let me start with asking a question, well, is there any information, materials, job descriptions that this committee has not received that was submitted by the Collins Center?
The summary is pretty much there, we'll be forthright.
Right, so they, they gave you nothing else? They gave you no job descriptions?
They have provided job descriptions, they are not, to our format, they are not, they're very basic, and I need to be inputting more of the job duties, they try to make them more generic.
So they're recommended, if I could just, I'm sorry, they recommended job descriptions, the language they used were generic, whereas our descriptions were totally different. So you only corrected things in the job, as you said previously, that made the jobs equal to what was actually being done, and you didn't really change anybody's duties? I mean, I'm trusting that, I mean, if I hear that, hey, my job completely changed, some employee.
No.
Okay.
Because as I reviewed, as I reviewed job descriptions, they go to the, if it's for a vacancy, they go to the department head and say, is this, what this job is going to be, is it what they're doing? If it's for an existing position, every employee talks to them and say, do you really do all of this, can you do any more, and.
Okay, JP, I'm sorry.
So, so, excuse me, the answer to your question is, the job descriptions are not ready for council review.
She's still amending them?
So, no.
Okay, because it was one of the things that they were gonna do, and provide for us, because I, if I'm not mistaken, primary points.
However, they weren't at, to our format, ours are very detailed job descriptions, they go in with, you know, not only do they do duties, but there's an overall summary of the position, there's this one, or, you know, what is this job, a male lifting up 20 pounds occasionally, male, you know, who do exactly, there are many requirements for people that you need, so we put all of that in, where theirs is pretty much together, especially for the clerical, it was, you know, basically create a clerk's job description, whereas the clerk in DPW could be very different than the clerk in finance, so.
Wouldn't that lend credence to a different grade, a different, a different position?
Not necessarily.
A different title, as opposed to, if you have the same title, but you're doing something entirely different?
Not necessarily, because if you put, the way ours work, we have, like, principal clerk finance and principal clerk DPW, for example, the jobs may have, finance may have as A, B, and C, and people in DPW, they do D, E, and F, responsibilities of people levels, but they're different teams.
Okay. That'd be good to understand, certainly good to understand.
The biggest thing that I want to get out there is that, when writing the job descriptions, you're in a position, not.
Well, not the people, we got, I heard that, and that is absolutely the way to do this, this kind of a study and to run an operation, it's not, not the person that's doing the job.
Collins Center, as I say, Collins Center did sit down with each person doing it, and which I think is critical for the community's service, so they did talk with each employee, but it is, as I'm working on the job descriptions, it's for the position.
I, so, but just, just let me interrupt a second, principal clerk, you were talking about that, we only have one principal clerk yet.
It's just an exception.
I understand that, but you didn't, didn't you said there's one in DPW, and there's one in five, there's different clerks, right?
Correct, I'm not, I'm not sure what the two.
Okay.
Are in DPW, I was just confusing that.
I just noticed in their summary, they have one, two, three, four, five different ones, and they have different pay scales.
Right, because we have clerk, we have senior clerk, we have, you know, there's all.
We do have those in here?
They are.
I'm just, maybe I missed them. Okay, we have clerk, we have principal clerk, clerk, city clerk.
So your point, though, the principal clerk, parks and recalc, DPW, in assessing, all makes 1705, but principal clerk for building makes 18, 19, you know, so there are principal clerk, role, different departments make different.
Well, this is a survey, this survey doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we're doing, this is what's out there, this isn't us, this is what's out there.
Gotcha.
So I'm just curious if there's that difference in job requirements or skill level, why we would only have one, and I'm not sure we do, you may have different clerks in different positions, but, I'm sorry, I'm just getting curious about.
Because, for example, let's say we're principal clerk, principal clerk title was approved by the council at some point in time, so once it's approved, it could be used in multiple departments, it's not like we. It's not like we, you know, we go back and say, would you approve principal clerk for this office? Because you approved the position of principal clerk, so there could be multiple departments that have a principal clerk.
Okay. JP, go ahead.
Uh, to begin, to page ten of the report. It's, there's a schedule of DPW titles and grades.
Correct.
I'm just curious, we have wastewater treatment plant mechanic and a DPW two...
But they're all union, right?
Right, this grade...
That's a union, right. A union, okay.
So...
Within wastewater treatment plant?
The two top charts on page ten represent the two DPW units, and those are their recommendations, but they're under CBA's, so they can't, they're not being considered.
You can't, you, you can use them in negotiation, but we can't. We don't have any say over that.
Right, we're not asking you at this point to approve those two.
Because the pay plan has nothing to do with collective bargaining rates.
Uh, let's see.
I guess they're just trying to counsel us, just trying to give the mayor examples of what other people, of what should be paid for these type of things, so that when it comes to negotiation. We're already paying you more than the other people.
I was just curious if I might, DPW four, a mechanic, lead mechanic is a DPW four, and a mechanic helper is listed as a DPW three. That just seemed like strange nomenclature for a title. If you look at DPW three, there's a mechanic slash help as a DPW three grade, and the next grade down is a DPW four, has a mechanic, lead mechanic.
I'm not sure why we're discussing that.
Well, because, I'm curious, it just seems like, it's an odd nomenclature to have this guy who's the lead, a lead mechanic, labeled as a lead mechanic, to be paid lower or higher.
Four, four is higher.
Four is higher. That explains it. I have no more...
I'm not the only one who can't read them.
No, this is, this is, this is interesting to read. One thing I didn't read, because I haven't seen it yet, is the impact on our budget. It seems to me that we, before we approve anything, we ought to be aware of what the dollar amounts are for either this fiscal year, the next fiscal year, and the following fiscal year, and maybe even the third fiscal year, for approval of the pay plan as suggested. That would, that would seem prudent to do, that would seem fiscally responsible.
She did mention she was looking at paying people more money this year, based on this.
July one.
July one?
Right.
All right, so, the other thing that goes to JP's question is, if you're doing annual stepping increases, and now even people maxed out in the previous pay system are going to get a slight increase, you add that up, there's a certain amount of money in there. She's expecting to do that, because you're, I think Mayor Taznik may not have always done annual step increases.
As I understand it, because it would be all on seven fiscal years.
Okay, but it is the current policy of the Personnel Department to give step increases at their...
On anniversary days.
Anniversary, so if you're on the tenth anniversary of your stay here, you're at step ten, or whatever it is.
Correct.
So you max out based on how many years you've been here.
Correct.
So, to go to JP's question, if we're going to do that, and we have a new pay scale that actually increases the steps, there's a dollar amount involved in that.
The biggest difference in this, these steps is, is smaller than the percentage between the steps.
I'm not, I guess what I'm thinking of, but I think Dan's thinking the same thing, I think, is not, not the difference in steps, but the aggregate budget difference, the annual cost.
I guess, we're gonna, we're gonna know that.
I certainly wouldn't approve anything without being aware of what the annual costs are, and I think, you know, the mayor's office should be aware, the personnel office should be aware, treasurer should, finance director should be aware, and we should be made aware of those numbers.
I don't, I don't correlate approving the pay plan. Obviously, the budget is impacted, but there is a choice as to whether they're going to improve stepping increases. It's not written in stone, and the reason I brought up the Mayor Taznik thing is, they have a choice whether or not they're going to do annual step increases. If they're, if the budget doesn't exist to do that, then they would do it, they don't have to do it. Am I right? If I, she could say, hey, look, we just can't do it this year, next budget season. We're gonna do it this year, this is how we're gonna do it. My feeling on the pay plan right now is it improves a lot of our employees' futures. Is that a fair statement?
It does, and it's also morale, because you're looking at, you know, a guarantee, but you're looking at potential increase each year until you max out, whereas when you have the long-term value of employees, they're maxed out, and their whole thing is, if we don't get a full item, we have any increase.
I understand that, but when you work for the municipality, hopefully you're told what the starting wage will be before you're hired, I think we did that before, or we do it now.
We do.
You're given, before very long, you become aware of the step plans and your grade, and you know that after so many years, there isn't another increase except for the cost of living.
Right.
And you sign on based on, based with that knowledge. So although I appreciate people being at the top of the pay scale and not getting anything more, that kinda was the plan before. Okay, good. If we're gonna change it, I think it's incumbent on this committee to know how much that amount is gonna be.
I think we will know that, because she's presenting a budget on Wednesday. We can ask that question. I mean, I'm not...
The budget, as I understand it, the budget is being submitted as on the current, you know, on the current pay grid. It's not on you, because that's sort of open council.
So, in other words, in other words, if we, you'd have to have a supplemental appropriation to approve it.
Correct.
That lets us know.
Substantial appropriation to pay people their rate?
Their rate that you've already approved, it doesn't seem to make...
Right.
A logical, logical sequence of events, I think the logical thing is...
We almost have to pay the people their salary, I mean, you can't...
No, well, listen, we approved this plan, but I, I think if we know the budget amount before we approve, I think we also then can look at, well, geez, maybe, maybe it should be phased in, if it's a significant amount. Maybe, I mean, other communities have done this, uh, throughout the Commonwealth and other states in New England.
Phase in the pay plan?
You phase in the payment schedules.
Well, that's what they're doing, step increases.
Those are step increases, but let's say, let's say the amount is fifty thousand dollars.
Average amount of the salary?
I don't know if it's five thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we don't know. It may be more appropriate to phase in over a two or three-year period, if the amount is something that is significant. To approve the plan in, with absent that knowledge, doesn't make sense.
What you're missing, what you're missing is, they don't have to, we approve the plan, they don't have any legal requirement to increase salaries by steps, as Mike Taznik didn't do it. There could be no increases next year.
Right.
Based on, based on the fact that, that the pay plan may be there, and you may tell the employees, now, based on what she said, she wants the morale to improve, so they want to try that, but the point is, I'm trying to make is, that they don't have a legal obligation to do it, so, yes, they could phase it in if they choose to. We will give you a, we will give you a fifty percent step increase. They could do that. I believe legally, right? You could, if, if you can do no, you could do fifty percent, so the point I'm trying to make is, the pay plan is something that gives the Personnel Office of the Mayor, whatever Mayor, whoever the Mayor is, the place to go. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be funded.
Right, I understand.
You have a right to know that, but I don't see holding it up, approving it, because if we just, if we disapprove it, we're saying, we might be giving the message that this pay plan doesn't help our employees, because I don't, I think the opposite is true, I think it helps our employees.
I don't, I don't think we should disapprove it. I think we should get more information that helps us to make a good decision.
We could do that, we can, we can do that, I, I just don't, I don't need that information to make that decision, because I don't have the right to say, you have to increase their salaries. I can't tell the mayor to do that, I don't have the right as a counselor to appropriate funds. If she presents the fact that, no, I'm not going to appropriate any funds for this pay plan next year, we could object, but why would we not approve the pay?
Because we might not approve of the increase in the budget, that...
Over time.
The consequent, over time, amount.
I don't know. I have a hard time saying no to paying people more money though, JP. I could say something else I'd cut.
I don't have a problem protecting the taxpayer dollars in this, it may very well be something that the city can afford, and is deserved, and should be done. I'm not saying, taking the approach that it shouldn't be done, I'm saying we should have additional information before this.
The current pay grid, the steps are approximately three percent of our, the seven increase, the annual step increase, is approximately three percent. The new pay grid, I think they're at two and a half percent between the steps, so the steps aren't gone thus far.
But there are new possibilities of steps, because somebody maxed out in the old pay grade, so his point is, that's gonna mean more money is going out to catch people up to the new pay plan, because there's going to be step increases. The person was maxed before, and they're getting a new stepping.
Right, people that are maxed are not going to be that far from the max of the new pay, they will have a few years.
That's great, but it's still, it's still data that I think in order to approve, I, I think it's irresponsible not to have the data and approve.
Well, that's JP's...
That's my, that's my, that's my, I'm speaking for myself.
Yes, I, I don't, I don't feel that that's, because the other thing you can do is, when we get to the budget topic, they say, this is the increase in this budget line because that person is getting a step increase caused by the new pay plan.
At that point, we're not gonna say, we're not, we're not gonna give that, because we have, we've adopted a new pay plan to that effect. I think it's part and parcel of adopting the pay, the pay. That speaks to that issue. I have a few other questions about the report itself.
Go ahead.
Uh, we had only nine communities that were comparable communities. Communities were Agawam, which has population one hundred and seventy-nine percent that of Easthampton's. Their general government expenditures are four hundred and fourteen percent more. Their public works expenditures are two hundred and ninety-eight percent more than ours. Amherst, two hundred and forty-eight percent more population, including students.
Is that one of the cities that they compare, Amherst?
Yes.
I don't remember.
Um, when you go to Hoyoke, that's as a comparable community, and say this, because it would seem, particularly with the public works department, when you're looking at that line of those areas, there's three hundred and one percent more budget in Westfield in public works than there is in Easthampton. Three hundred and one percent, and one would think that there would be a larger span of control, larger operating, larger, maybe more employees, I don't know.
She does, she was their director personnel, so she does.
Maybe you do, I don't know how many people there are, maybe that would be helpful in, in, in Westfield.
Because the power, their power plan or whatever, right, when they have their own...
Westfield's a city, Westfield's a city.
That's a city department, it's a municipal, light, separate, separate organization. Hoyoke is, is very different. If you look at the data, they're very different budgets, communities, and it would seem important to be able to kind of pull that together, and that's why I had asked in, in some ways with the job description. I know the Collins Center says they're pulling it together. So, for example, in Hampton, New Hampshire, they, in their report, and I'll share this with you, I think they did a fabulous job with their market data, external market data, and it was done in fiscal year eighteen. They've outlined highs and lows for each of the communities, for each position, so for example, the chief of police for each of the communities that were studied, and I think there were three, six, nine, twelve communities, uh, they give the low range, the low salary, and the highest salary available for that position. They give the comparable data points that were used in the analysis, uh, if you look over to the right, about the fourth or fifth column from the, from the right, these comparable data points. Some position, most positions had eight, nine, ten, eleven data points, we don't know. Do you know how many data points were used in each of the positions?
I think it's in their report.
I didn't see it. That would be incorrect, I'm sorry if, if it's in here, I apologize.
Factors used to evaluate supervision required, supervisory responsibility, accountability, judgment complexity, confidentiality, education required, experience required, nature of purpose of contact, occupation risk, work environment of this...
That's different. What, what, what they're talking about is for comparative data points, are the number of communities...
Each of the cities?
The number of communities that reported, and they have in data for information with regard to the salary.
My only problem with that comparison is, to us, is, we don't know if the job descriptions are comparable.
Well, we don't, without, without the job descriptions.
The Collins Center did that data.
Right, without the job descriptions, we don't know, ourselves.
Well, we'd have to have job descriptions from every community, but that's why we hired the Collins Center to do that research, and it cost us a lot of money, because that, that would take Jane forever.
Oh.
So, my point, my point is that...
Because although you're doing the job description, so it was, hopefully it won't take forever, because that could be a long time.
But my point, JP, is that all of these comparisons are based on apples and apples.
Right.
We don't know that on here, there may be a lot more behind this that we don't...
That's why using comparative data points is important, if you say, hey, listen, there are chiefs of police in each of the communities, and each of them reported, so we're having, we have nine comparative data points. We have information on each position, the high and the low for each of the communities, and you could look at that and say, geez, because each community is very different, whether it be Southampton's chief of police, or Hoyoke's chief of police.
Yeah, I understand.
My point is, we don't have any information on what the individual amounts are for each of the communities.
Yeah, but see, I don't see how that's relevant, because their positions are different than ours. Southampton's chief of police doesn't have the same supervisory responsibility, doesn't have the same force.
Well, that's exactly my point, because what we're using is the average of these salaries.
Okay.
Using an average, to me, is like using, taking an average shoe size and saying that will fit everyone's foot.
I don't know if I agree with that statement, analogy doesn't work for me. Jane?
The summary, can you give them the max? Read.
The summary gives us an average...
The minimum, the medium, and the max. Well, yeah, but the point is...
An average of the amalgamation of Southampton, and Hoyoke, and Westfield, and Northampton, and Amherst, most of which were the budgets in the, in the, are much higher.
You're basing it solely on dollars, when, as you read, the factors involved involve super, what they did in their job, there's so many factors. What, you named about eight of them, ten of them, how many people did they supervise? What are their job responsibilities? My point being that, how do you, they have to make an analysis, this is the Collins Center, these communities pay this, this is what they, those people do in those communities, police chief at Southampton, does this many, has this many supervisor, supervisors...
That's why it would be helpful to know what the Southampton salary is. That's why it would be helpful to know what the Southampton salary is versus the Hoyoke and the Northampton salary. Because we is, we could look at it and say, geez, you know, I know that the budget in Northampton, in, in Northampton. Is a hundred and eleven million dollars. The budget in Easthampton is.
I personally don't feel that I need to, I, I.
Roles and responsibilities of the department. There, there's more police officers in there.
Obviously. So why, that's why they might be paid more. I don't need to know that. I need, you're saying.
Without looking at.
All I'm saying is I'm trusting the fact that the Collins Center.
You're trusting.
Well, I am.
I know.
If you don't have any trust, why are we here?
I'm looking at it and trying to.
I'm trusting the Collins Center.
Data and then look at it and use our own heads to compare against the various communities. So anyway.
Well, yeah, but see, that would take a long time to be, and I'm not trained. All I'm saying is I'm not trained to analyze.
They have the data in each. You look at the analysis for Hampton, there's twelve communities. There's lots of data here. If we knew, said Northampton or Southampton, I could look at that and say, yeah, that seems to make sense and we should be not using an average, but maybe we should be higher or lower.
Well, I don't know how.
It would be helpful.
I, I got this. I was happy with this because this particular scale range tells me that they studied the finance director in a lot of communities. And chose and said by red figures, we're below them based on the median. But they also took into consideration a lot of factors with regard to each job. I can't use that and say to myself, because I'm not trained in this, and I have to study everybody's job description in every community to know that they're the same. And what those responses, plus I have to be trained in how to do that. My only point is we hire an outside independent company, which I think is better than us trying to do it.
If that makes sense, I just wish they would share their data first.
Well, okay, you can get the data. You can go to each community. It's online. How much we pay anybody? How much any community pays anybody is public record.
People we hired have that, I hope.
Do you have the, how much we pay, how much the police chief makes in every community? You, we can be found. I mean, I don't need it and I have to say, my point is the independent analysis proved that we were underpaying employees in many ways. Correct? Is that a correct statement? That to me proves that this analysis was worth it. If it says we were underpaying them, I mean, we were overpaying them, I would say, wait a minute. Because that would be a number on a morale buster. We're going to lose employees. They'd have to really prove that and that would go to your point. But I don't know what else to say except that because it's independent, this is proving to me that they did the work. I have more questions, but go ahead. Do you have any more? I want to give Bill a chance.
Leave it to Bill.
Alright. Leave it to Billy.
You know, I, I appreciate all the information that JP handed us and I think it is good information and, and the Collins Center probably has that information. And I think that's what you're asking for is, is what, what figures they, they used to get these medians. Because they should have all the police chiefs of all the nine communities that they used, right, to get it. I don't know if that's available to us.
You're saying it's not, right?
I had talked to the county manager personally.
Is it possible to send them the reporter, to ask for the data points they just reported? Hampton did?
I didn't.
That would be helpful.
Thank you, Jane.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, it's, it's good knowledge and to your point, I'm, I'm not an expert on it either, but I think just to compare and look at where they built that median. Price range makes, makes a lot of sense. On the step increases, you know, and, and I know that they don't have to or whatever. They're not anniversary date. It's performance based, right? So they're, they're.
No, they're.
It is not performance based. I was remembering from the last time.
They're looking into.
Looking into doing that. I got you.
But that is something that is a major undertaking.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Because that was one of my questions. They did recommend it.
They recommended it.
Page eleven.
And that's where we were looking into it. That's why I wanted, so we're not approving that at this point. So these twelve step on exhibit B, when we, if we approved it, would be twelve steps. So if you're with the, the city for twelve years, you would be at your max and that's at this point.
Potentially, potentially.
If there was the raises every year.
If their rate, if their rate right now is a twenty-five and on the new, on the new grade, they fall at step two, seven, step six.
Yep.
They've only got to be, so it could be less time depending on where their current salary falls.
True. Right. Cause they're existing. But like somebody hired off the street would be, yep. And then the only other thing is grade A, which is the, the bottom rung or whatever. Step one is fifteen dollars an hour. Is that based off of the minimum wage rate that we're going to? So is there people that are minimum wage right now that would now get bumped up to fifteen dollars an hour? Cause we're not at fifteen dollars an hour for another couple of years after.
I believe that we have any city, we have many people that are under minimum wage or at minimum wage for our employees.
The seasonal temps and stuff.
But so grade one, what's minimum wage now?
And crossing guards and seasonal.
What's minimum wage now? Well, so we start above state minimum wage, grade one, step one is thirteen. That's the current pay. Good. I guess that's good.
But I thought that the budget you're going to be receiving, parks and crossing guards budgets have taken a hit because they're going to the faculty. Because technically in Massachusetts, municipalities only have to follow federal application. Which is like seven or eight.
Yeah, nothing.
Are you saying they're getting a decrease in pay?
No, no.
We are going to Massachusetts.
Which is twelve. So there's going to be less personnel, but more money for those that are retained. That's always the case. Business anywhere. There's a minimum wage. You risk that unfortunately.
Seasonal will, will where?
Seasonal.
There is a thing.
They go to the, 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 Massachusetts.
Of thirteen, twelve. So that's where they are and that's where they will.
They're going to that with the, currently some of them are below.
Yeah, like the pool cashier is eleven dollars or whatever.
Because it's, it was using the federal as our guideline. So they're going to Massachusetts.
Which is the right thing to do, I feel, because this is the economy that we live in is not, you know, the same everywhere else. California's different. Where these people live, so I mean, I think that's.
So a municipality could go by the federal minimum wage even though we're in the state? The state's minimum wage doesn't have to be followed in a municipality? That's cock backwards.
It is backwards.
Well, I'm glad we're doing that.
Yeah, I feel we're doing the right thing.
It's hard to explain.
Who lives on seven dollars an hour?
It's hard to explain if someone presents this, why am I not making that point? Technically you are.
Uh, I have a couple other, you have anything else?
No, I, I think.
Want to make it clear that there was some discussions about city clerk and the way that stipend is being delivered. That's not changing. That's what their recommendations are not being followed. City clerk is still going to get the same pay system. And that includes the, I think, the finance director and the auditor get extra money in their pay because of the extra work that they do. I'm trying to remember. Retirement. They're getting, then nothing's changing. Cause that's in there and that's a big question. I'm sure council is going to have, because Barbara, you know, we love Barbara. Uh, speaking of Barbara, she brought up a, a little thing here that is a clerical thing. In grade C, you have outreach worker. In grade D, you have outreach worker. Are there two? Could we put that in the amendments to say that? It looks like a mistake. That's, okay. So I'm assuming C is part-time. Cause it's a lower grade. Okay. And she wanted to ask if it is true, in the paperwork she got. It says effective July first in exhibit B here, but she has motion. She wants to confirm July first is when this pay, if, if it's approved by the council is when it would be enacted. Not immediate, July first. Okay. I have motions.
Have we resolved the hourly rates issue with regard to paid lunches?
Oh, that's a good one.
It says here, some employees received a paid lunch period and others do not.
Said, I have that here.
Typically employees are not paid for lunch breaks.
The only, we have it where we are, especially now with the automated, fully, um, theorized payroll system, the clock, time clock, where we all punch in and punch out. We, if you do not punch out for lunch, it takes your hour lunch from the system guys. The only position that does get paid for lunch is dispatch because there is not always someone there to relieve them for their lunch break.
They allowed to eat a sandwich while they're.
Absolutely. Because as you know how dispatch works, they could go for hours without a phone call.
And then get.
Or they could go for hours with, with business to do.
They could go for minutes, you know.
So just to repeat, people have to punch out to take their lunch.
So that's a change since this report was submitted?
Well, no, dispatch does get paid for their lunch.
Uh, no, she's talking, he's talking about for everybody.
They're the only ones that.
Dispatch was the only one.
And that's what the report was targeting?
I believe so, yes.
The equity and breaks, just dispatch?
I believe so, because everybody else is always taking. They all have the same schedule. Monday, seven thirty-five, Tuesday, seven thirty-five.
So when your assistant takes lunch, they're not paid for them?
They are not.
So during the week, if they're asked to work thirty-five hours, whatever the hours are. There's an hour, there's five hours in there. She, she's here forty hours, but five of them are. Right, four. Okay, four hours are lunches, but they're not being paid for them. And that's everybody. So the equity thing in here was just about dispatch?
So the Collins Center wrote up, some employees receive a paid lunch period and others do not.
And you're saying nobody?
No, no. And you're saying nobody does except for, that is, nobody gets their lunch period paid for except for dispatch. And the Collins Center didn't put that, didn't put that into their study? I think that's dispatch. I think that, that's a, an amendment to the, to the report that should be stated. It makes the city.
Well, she's saying that. I'm curious. They did this report prior to your tenure. You're certain?
I finished with, I finished with.
I know, but you're pretty sure that nobody else had been in the past, not now, getting paid lunches?
In any case, you can look into that again and come back to us with that at our next meeting so that we can be sure that that's cleared up. And I think it makes eminent sense that a dispatcher working through their lunch period. That's, that's fine to be, they're there. They're going to answer the call. They're going to take care of business and do what has to be done. I don't think they should get.
Why would they put that in? In other words, JP's point is well taken. Why would they put that in the report if there wasn't more than one to dispatch? Dispatch is common sense. Yeah, I'd appreciate it, Jay. I think what I'd like to propose, gentlemen, is what are you both doing next Tuesday? Cause this is up for public hearing. I don't want to delay it unless you really feel we have to. And we give Jane time, maybe we can get the money that you're looking at. You can at least find out if we can get the data point study, right? And what is the budget impact? If we do maintain annual step increases, tell me if I'm right JP. If we maintain annual step increases, what is the budget impact anticipated for next fiscal year, maybe future fiscal year? Is that what you're thinking? Okay.
What's, what's the impact of this rollout of the new pay plan?
And, and it's not in the current budget, but what would it be if there was a supplemental?
For the next fiscal year and the fiscal year after. If you can do three, that would be helpful because then you really kind of know what, what we're kind of setting ourselves up for over that three-year period.
It would seem that it would be an easy Excel kind of data manipulation, but I don't know.
That would be, that would be most helpful.
Can we do Tuesday?
The other, the other issue I still have before we talk about.
Oh.
Is the position of chief of staff.
Oh, yes. That's not going to be in here. We're going to amend that. I talked to the mayor. She recognizes that. A statement was made Jane, that I don't believe is, I can't remember it, that if we approve the pay plan, we approve the position. We do not want to approve a position, a brand-new position anywhere. I don't recall doing it, but if I do, if it's been done in the past. Perhaps I shouldn't have said yes to that if I was a counselor, when I was a counselor, because I've always been a counselor. But I'm, talked to the mayor about it today and she recognizes that until a position is created, we don't want it to appear in the paper. She talked about it being a placeholder, but I would rather it not be in there. So I'm going to recommend the finance committee remove chief of staff from the paper.
I will definitely second that.
Alright, but when we, when we do the final vote, that's going to be in there. Okay? Guys, you agree with that? And I talked to her today. She says, fine. Um, there's ways we can create it. In fact, I told her that if she wanted to approach it. You know, something maybe you could look into. I believe. Positions can be created by ordinance. There's nothing that says, we have positions that have three-year terms. The auditor, finance director. Chief of staff position could be, it doesn't have to be a department head. It can be a position that has a two-year term. That begins January first of the election of the mayor and ends two years thereafter. That way a chief of staff is connected to the mayor. And if it's reappointed, like at all those positions, then that position could be something that a new mayor could start over with. So I feel that if, if she's going, and she, she wants, she's thinking about that for the future. She doesn't want to do it. Cause she's not budgeting it, she said, anyway. So I told her that that would be a way to do it so that, because we were looking at contracted positions way back, whether. Through her purchasing power, she can contract the chief of staff, et cetera. That didn't fly with the former city attorney. So now we're going to. Now I'm saying use the charter as it is, create a position, but why not put a term limit on it? Two-year term, reappointed. I don't believe, I know that most of our term limited appointments are departments, right? Including our, you know, principal assessor, the city clerk, et cetera. But I don't see why the chief of staff couldn't be there. But the column, the department head, but. So that's where I am, I am with that. Okay? You understand that? So we are going to amend that.
So we'll get the rollout and we'll get the market data.
Well, if, if Collins Center is willing to give us the market data, it's not going to hold my vote up, but the councils are requesting it. Okay? Can you guys meet next Tuesday? Or do we want to, I don't want to hold this up.
I got a safety meeting after six.
What time? Six?
I gotta work till five. Springfield's level. I'll be racing to get here for six. And it's looking to be pretty involved meeting.
Yes, that looks like a, a big, the whole Ferry Street project.
How about five o'clock on Wednesday before the final meeting? For the chief.
It's pushing it. Is it that critical that we're aggressive?
Well, let me say this. She said she wants to pay people, right? She wants to dock, if we could do it. On the other hand, if we're not going to start paying them until July one, why can't we delay a couple of weeks? You're looking at me like you don't know.
That's your problem.
Well, that was one of the reasons I, I said, okay, we're going to try and pay people, but we're not going to do retroactive pay increases for this year. We're not, right? We're doing July first. So we got time. Okay, I'll continue the public hearing. We're going to continue this discussion at the next meeting.
Very good.
It gives you two weeks to get information, if you can. And if you get it ahead of time, it'd be great. We can share it with us so that our meeting is shorter.
The sooner, the sooner the better. That would be great with all the information.
Let's, let's review it then. Budgetary impact. Town by town summary if possible from the Collins Center. Using that. Using the, whatever that town is.
Example from Hampton, New Hampshire.
These, the counselors would like that. Secondly. What was the third thing we needed? You need something else? Jane, what do you have down here?
The issue of the dispatcher and the lunches.
Oh, the lunches. Asking Collins Center what they base that comment on. Because it's curious if it's just the dispatchers. Okay. Is that it, guys?
That's it.
Will we adjourn? Okay.